If I could have your attention, it's 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the Loudoun City Council meeting for September 27th, 2021 to order. We have two special guests with us tonight. We have a lot of special guests, but the two that's on the agenda tonight is we're glad to have Deacon Stanley Blair from Mount Olive Baptist Church. I also have several members of Mount Olive Baptist Church here tonight. And Ms. Abely Breable, who's the daughter of Wiley and Courtney Breable, she's going to do our pledge of allegiance tonight. So if Mr. Blair and Ms. Abely could approach the podium, and everyone stand up. Mr. Blair, go right ahead.
I'd like to make a little correction. I'm a member of Mount Pleasant Baptist Church in Athens, Tennessee. I was a member of Mount Olive for many, many years, but we've been in Athens for thirty-three years now, so.
Wow, thank you for that.
That's all right. A Deacon's a Deacon no matter where. Would everyone please bow your head? Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this, your continuing love for us. Thank you for the beautiful day that you have given us today. We ask blessings on the city council members as they attempt to do what is pleasing in your sight, to make this community better. We ask that you give them vision, knowledge, and courage to make decisions that affect the community they serve. We ask that you bless the newest member of the council, Mr. Admiral Webster. Give him the courage to make decisions that reflect your will and your ways. This is my prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
Abely, if you'll take the microphone.
Attention, salute, say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all may be seated. Ms. Abely, if you would join me right after the front here. We have a, have a flag for you. And a coin. Shows the, the city logo on it. And on the back of the flag says, "Thank you for your service." And then here's something your parents might want. It's an official agenda with your name listed. Okay? So if we can have a picture made, if you'll turn it. Let me hold this for you. There you go.
Awesome.
All right. Now, the next thing is, Mr. Admiral Webster, come out here and hope I don't get mixed up with the wedding vows and do this. Somebody correct me before I go too far. Admiral, I ask you to raise your right hand. Repeat that for me. I, Admiral Webster.
I, Admiral Webster.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The state of Tennessee.
The state of Tennessee.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Loudoun.
Of the city of Loudoun.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of councilman.
Of councilman.
Of the city of Loudoun.
Of the city of Loudoun.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, we're done. Since I'm already out here, we're going to move an item up. We have some employee work anniversaries to recognize. So we have Bill Evans and Bobby Langford. Y'all join me up here. I remember when Bobby Langford was a paper boy. Riding his motorcycle. He'd be limping aside and Bobby would crank that motorcycle up.
You remember well.
Yeah. Bill Evans, this is presented to Bill Evans, Police Department, in appreciation of twenty-three years of service to the city of Loudoun, 2021. Appreciate you, Bill. Appreciate you. This is presented to Bobby Langford, Police Department, in appreciation of twenty-four years of service to the city of Loudoun, 2021.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Appreciate it. All right, I want to ask for roll call, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Vivens.
Here.
Councilmember James.
Here.
Councilmember Webster.
Here.
Okay, thank you for that. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudoun City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harrison. I want to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennessean the right to attend city council meetings and to observe how their government does business. We appreciate that each of you have taken the time from your own personal schedules to be here tonight to see how our city government works. It's my intention as your chair that we create a space where everyone feels seen, heard, respected, and valued. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you do not have one, you can pick one up at the table in the, at the back of the room. That's your guide to the topics we're going to discuss tonight. In order to conduct efficient business-like meetings, the council has adopted specific rules to follow. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, assure that all points of view are heard and considered, and provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to the place on the agenda which is entitled Citizens' Input, where anyone who has signed in to speak to council is encouraged to do so. We do, however, ask that you wait until you've been recognized before you speak. After being recognized, please approach the podium to address the council and observe three simple rules. At the beginning of a presentation, please state your name for the records. Please address all your questions to the chair and avoid the use of improper language, profanity, and any other inappropriate conduct. Once the Citizens' Input portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. You are welcome to stay and observe the meeting, but be advised that public comments may be limited. We ask that everyone remember we're doing the people's business here tonight, and it's a very important responsibility for all of us. You can help us do this business by observing the rules we've established for our meetings. And again, we're going to welcome you to the Loudoun City Council meeting. We're glad that you're here tonight. With that being said, the next item on the agenda, since I've moved that up, is adoption of the agenda. And there's one addition. I'd like to see added to the agenda, be Resolution Number Eight. At Creekside Preserve, which is the new housing project that's going in behind Romeo's off of Queen of Road, if y'all remember, Mr. Pettit, the developer, had some property that was in the floodplain, and he wanted to donate that to the city because it joins the park. And I think Nicole has a, a view of that. We need to, we just got the quitclaim deed today. Our attorney for I has that deed. So it didn't, we didn't have that deed in time when the agenda went out. So the city has to accept that donation. So I'd like to add that to the agenda, that was Resolution Number Eight. So I'll need someone to make that motion to add that in second.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dixon, we have a motion in second. Is there any questions to what we're doing? We can discuss it as that comes up in, in the agenda. Okay, if all those agree with adding that to agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. With that being said, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, second, motion second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our do, our agenda is adopted. Next item on the agenda is Citizens' Input. We have one. Clay Towns, you can approach the podium and say what's on your mind.
I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and the city council members for letting me speak. And I really appreciate the work you all do to the city and citizens of Loudoun. I just had a few questions about the Hutch property downtown. If I understood it right, the city paid over 1.6 million for that property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
At the workshop last, uh, earlier this month, it never was mentioned whether we were selling the land or giving it to him, or how that was, are we getting our money back, or how's that? Or not?
We're transferring the, the property to the IDB, correct, Manager Ross? That's the city's.
We're at the beginning of a process, the outcome of which could be to transfer a property to a developer in exchange for approximately forty million dollars of new investment in our community.
So the, or give it to him. Is that correct?
The, the, the way that we have discussed this deal, the possibility of this deal potentially with the developer, is that the property would be conveyed in exchange for the investment, and there would be no tax abatements. So the deed would result approximately one dollar or ten dollars of, of consideration.
So there's no tax breaks given to the.
No, no taxes, that is correct. And the taxes and any other parcel.
Okay.
And he did ask for that, but that was not granted.
Okay. Another thing, I was wondering about the utility upgrade in that area. Well, the utilities, are the city being responsible for that, or the build?
Right now, we've looked at that, and it's, the infrastructure is sufficient.
Well, is, uh, any, any developer, whether it be the one just up on the screen, just Creekside Preserve, or, or Tennessee National, any new construction that includes, would include utilities installed by the developer, after installation inspection, the utility takes it over and maintains it.
And if I understood it right, it's all rental property, correct?
That's the, that's the plan going forward at this point, yes.
Okay. And if it goes through, all the rent money will be going to our county, right?
I guess it's where he lives, yeah?
Yeah. I just want everything to be, you know.
Sure. And we're taking property that's not on the tax rolls now and putting it on the tax rolls with this.
One other thing I was wondering, too, is each resident, will they have their own trash can pickup, or will it just be one big dumpster, or?
I don't think we've got that far with the development yet. They will have an HLA. That's the initial plan for them to have an HLA and a maintenance, you know, person to take care of that, so.
I was just making sure there's no more burden on the city when this is done, because, you know, the stress thing.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you.
Just wanted everything to go out there. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Clay. And just along with that, there'll be a meeting tomorrow under the bridge, public meeting. You'll see the, the drawings and everything on, just like this poster board over here in the corner. So you can feel free to ask the developer questions. So be a good time. If you do have questions, come down to that location and ask your questions, try to get those answered. Thank you, Clay, for your citizens' input. That was the only one that signed in. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. The regular meeting, August 23rd, 2021.
Well, Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes for August 23rd and the special call meeting of September 13th, and I recommend their approval, and it only requires one motion.
Okay, all right.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Vivens to approve the regular meeting and the special call. We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. Vice Mayor Dixon, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is fuel bid, September 14th, 2021. The low bid for the purchase of fuel was received from Sweetwater Valley Oil Company for the projected amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents. That was unleaded gasoline at two fifty-eight, two dollars and fifty-eight cents, and low sulfur at two dollars and twenty-one cents. Do we have a motion to approve the fuel bid?
I'll make the motion here first.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in second to approve the fuel bid to Sweetwater Valley Oil Company? Is there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we've got several ordinance on second reading. These will require a roll call vote, so just remind me of that. First one is amending the Charter 229 of the Private Acts of 1927 as amended, rewritten by Chapter 74, Private Acts of 75, Chapter 184, the Private Acts of 1988, Chapter 86 of the Private Acts of 2008, and any other acts amendatory thereto relative to the city council in the city of Loudoun. Again, just to perhaps bring Mr. Webster up to date, this is a second reading for the final step in from this change. And I know this has been going on for several months. We've talked about this at the state level. This is the final hurdle. And what this allows in the 22 election, 2022 election, the mayor runs for a four-year term. There'll be a seat A and a seat B. Each of those ones, two of those is a two-year term, and two's a four-year term. That puts a two-year stagger all the time going forward. That's just for one, it's just in this 2022 election.
And then it goes back to a four-year cycle in 2024.
Right.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in second. Any questions? And Mr. Webster, make sure you ask any questions that you might have on any items that we cover. Okay, we have a motion in second. Any questions? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Nope.
Councilmember Vivens.
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Aye.
Councilmember Webster.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye. At least it was on the person. Maybe we'll get the rest relevant. The second item is an ordinance living in privileged tax upon occupancy in any hotel or motel, or any place in which rooms, lodging, or accommodations are furnished to transit for consideration. This, again, is in your packet, the resolution is. And this would, effective date of this ordinance will be January 1st, 2022.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, and MTS did recommend this language that is in the ordinance. So to have any questions about this privilege tax. Okay, no questions. Roll call.
Councilmember Vivens.
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Aye.
Councilmember Webster.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is setting the salary of mayor and city council members. This legislation is a suggestion to pay a mayor and council as it pertains to our charter set by ordinance. This will take effect in December of 2022, and that amount will be city council members pay a monthly salary of four hundred dollars, and the mayor of city of Loudoun will pay monthly salary of eight hundred dollars. This will not go into effect until December 1st, 2022. Does not affect anyone on the current council.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any questions? Any clarifications about that? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Vivens.
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Aye.
Councilmember Webster.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the last one on second reading is regulating the use of engine compression braking devices. We can't call them jack brakes anymore. So this ordinance takes, tracks the language of regulation of engine compression braking devices contained in the Tennessee Code annotated, incorporates that same language into our city code as a local ordinance, which allows the Loudoun Police Department to sign them into city court if they violate that ordinance. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve regulating the use of engine compression braking devices. Is there any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Vivens.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Aye.
Councilmember Brett Webster.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, ordinance on the first reading is amendments include additional laborers for facilities and maintenance department, police department camera system, fire department grant, and concrete planters and water tower under the contract with Van Husco Company. So, Manager Ross, you.
Those are, those are some of the highlights, some of the things that've come up in, in recent council meetings. You can see from the packet, the itemization is, is, is fairly lengthy. It's been recommended by Director Curtis in our accounting department that these adjustments to the ledger be made in order to bring our books current this fiscal year. But we're happy to answer any questions you have about any line item contained in this budget amendment.
All those budget amendments are attached in your packet. If you have a question about a specific one, Director Curtis or Manager Ross can answer that.
I have a question about the Van Husco, just because I asked that the last time. That's for the, the transfer for the funds.
Yeah, that's for, it's for clarity within the budget. There is an agreement with Van Husco. It did involve the, the Williamson House, and it's a, it's a credit, you know, it, it began as a, a credit for, for concrete or concrete products, which, which, many which we ordered. But it's not in the budget. And, you know, to understand twenty years from now, what paid for those items, if you read the budget separately from that agreement, you wouldn't know. And so this just takes the agreement and incorporates it into the budget and, and makes it accounted for as a, as a credit.
I think it keeps up with your, like, your question and push tracking it. Right. So I think that was a good question. This is the way to do that. So.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion in second to amend the 2021, 2022 fiscal year budget? Is there any other questions or discussions about the amendments? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Vivens.
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Aye.
Councilmember Webster.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye. We'll set a public hearing for 6:25.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, now, the resolutions listed here. First one is authorizing engineering services for the proposed harbor improvements of Sticky Creek. Manager Ross, I'll let you take that one.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Webster made difference between the section we're entering, entering into versus what we just left. We just left the, the ordinance section, which are the, the laws that we're passing. But these are, these are separate contractual agreements. They usually spend any money with different vendors. First one the mayor brings forward is the proposed services for harbor improvements of the dredge project in Sticky Creek. This requires a permit from, from TBA. That land around Sticky Creek, where we, where we see the park, the walking bridge, the playground, the wonderful walking trail, that's all property of the United States of America. And we enjoy recreational easement across it. This, we've requested a permit to make these changes to the area. It could eventually include a fuel dump, courtesy docks for boats, and even a, a new boat ramp. That's all inside the permit application. But what TBA wants to see, and we did know this going in, we learned part of the way through, is that we have to have an engineering study, a hydrology study that, that certifies no rise will occur in what's our leg as, as a result of, of this project. We, with the horse that brung us this Thompson Engineering, and they've quoted this no-rise certification study at eighty-three hundred and fifty dollars. And it is a requirement before the permit is issued. Good news with this project, and it is still a potential project. It's in, it's in the preliminary engineering permitting phase. Doesn't mean we have to do it, but if we want to do it, we've recently been awarded a four-hundred-thousand-dollar Appalachian Regional Commission Grant, construction grant to assist with this project if we choose to go forward.
It's taken a lot of work to get us to this point. I know, I staff has worked hard on this. I never dreamed I'd have to write seven or eight letters to Indian tribes. So we had to do that. They got to be on notice since it is property of the United States of America. So they had to be notified, certain Indian tribes, about that land. So there's a lot of work went in to get it to this point at, at right now, so.
I'll make a motion. I'll see you later.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the engineering services for Thompson Engineering?
I'll second.
Motion in second. Any questions about this additional amount, this study, this no-rise study? This is, I want to understand a new, something new that they require and has to be done this study. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next resolution is approving the stormwater drainage cove repair and a section of Highland Avenue. Manager Ross?
The previous contract sets us up to potentially change the flow of Sticky Creek. That's a lot of water. This is less water. This is a stormwater drain off of Highland Avenue that runs between two houses. It's a pipe, it's an old pipe. It's been in the ground a long time, and it has failed. And as a result of that failure, waters, it's leaking out of this drainage line and infiltrating a resident's back patio and walk-in basement. It's a problem. That's a problem we need to address. And this contract, it's a local contract with Lee Utility. For eleven thousand seven hundred dollars, we'll, we'll fix this issue.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the stormwater drainage cove repair?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember James, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Webster. We have a motion in second to approve the stormwater drainage covert section of Highland Avenue. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Next item is amending Resolution Number 2021-37, which is amending the pay classification plan adopted June 21st of this year to provide for two additional positions of general labor. This is in the Public Works Department, correct?
Yep. Parts of these agendas speak to each other in real time. Back in the ordinance section,
Back in the ordinance section, you amended your budget ordinance. Part of that budget ordinance amendment provided money for two new hires in the Public Works Department. Separate from that, this council has always passed a personnel schedule showing how many people work in each department. So to add two new positions to the Public Works Department requires that that document be amended to show those two new people. And that's exactly what this does.
So this, this is, this resolution amends it to increase the general labors from five to seven in the Public Works Department. So we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll say it.
Okay, Councilmember James, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Vice Mayor Dixon, second. Any questions about this addition?
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Next item is approving the donation of two obsolete engines to Loudoun County High School. Manager Ross?
Yeah, still, as Mayor Director Harold brought up this idea specifically in the workshop, it came about from Loudoun High School. It's their desire to work on these, work on these engines. So this is not to be confused with on down the line. You've got several vehicles, a trailer, and some other stuff. They declared surplus by facilities maintenance. This is a, this is a direct donation to the high school in this resolution for two engines.
Okay, this would go to the auto mechanics class, Mr. Bibbins' class. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion by Vice Mayor Dixon to donate these two obsolete vehicle engines? Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second, to donate the two engines to the Loudoun County High School auto mechanics class. Is there any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. Next item is authorizing the purchase of block safety camera system. We discussed this at workshop. Manager Ross, I'll let you expand on that if you need to.
Yes, these cameras are needed to assist our police department in body crime. These cameras will track vehicles that are announced as suspects in an active investigation. They're able to pull the information in and track, track potential bad actors coming through our community. We discussed this in an executive session. And this is the outcome, we came out of it. We, there was a consensus about this product being an asset in our community. And this, this resolution purchases the cameras to be staged and also the software to support it.
And I will go back up and get the other.
Yeah.
Okay, since we're already into this one, this is a value, these six cameras, a value of $15,750. We discussed this in much detail, I think, Chief Webb and.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember James, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Webster, we have a motion, a second, to approve the block safety camera system at a value of $15,750. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Now, authorizing certain facilities and maintenance department vehicles and equipment to be considered surplus. This again is Director Harold's department, I think.
Yes, this has been identified by Director Harold in the department as an entity declared surplus. It's eight vehicles, some of which are older than 50 years. There is a piece of vacuum equipment, there is a trailer, and four separate automatic transmissions, separate from vehicles.
Can you see the list of items there in the resolution? See, I don't want to put a bin on any of them right there. A 1968 Chevrolet. Might be antique by now. Okay, we have a motion to approve these being surplus so they can put them on gut deals.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion, Councilmember James, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Councilmember Webster, seconds. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Next item is authorizing the purchase of fire department equipment through grant funding of Department of Homeland Security.
Yes, Councilmember Webster, you'll find that an odd word that the fire department will associate with their equipment. It's not a truck, it's not a trailer, it's an apparatus.
Yeah.
And so this, Chief Brubaker has, has won a grant through hard work and diligence to, to help pay for 23 self-contained breathing apparatus. And this is the, the equipment that our firefighters well, wear, as well as the backup tank that would, that would help support them.
Yeah, the total value of that's $168,998.
Almost $15,000.
Yeah, right, will come out of our budget, so.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion to approve purchase? Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Do we have a motion, a second? Do we have any questions about approving for the fire department equipment through this grant funding Homeland Security? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is only added to the agenda. This is for the city to accept donation of property by Mr. Brian Pettit at the Creekside Preserve Development, which joins the LMP. And Ms. Curtis has that up on the screen.
That's Sweetwater Creek.
So you can see.
That's Sweetwater Creek.
Right, so it's on both sides of the creek?
Approximately 15 acres. This is really kind of the whole corner of the, the land between, I guess, what you'd say, the main park and then the park where the soccer fields are. It just kind of fills in that, that corner there. And it's currently not directly accessible from, from the other parks, but it could be in the, in the future.
And it's in the floodplain, it's not buildable, so basically it could, it could be a park, it could be, you know.
What's on display is a, a final plat application that will come before the planning commission on the first week of October. Probably approximately 86 lots of Creekside Preserve. Our comments to this, to this plat and, and developers' desire for the 15 acres to be drug done into the city was that the developer would provide access to this. And it's difficult to see in this rendition, but between lots 19 and 20, there's a sidewalk drawn in so that the residents of that neighborhood can pass through and enter this property, maybe in the future, without walking across someone's yard.
So that sidewalk will be the responsibility of the developer to put that sidewalk in, that.
Yes, sir.
That is in their contract. And if, you know, the city's talked about for years putting in a, a bridge across the creek. If that's something we want to do, that's something we'd have to take, that would be on us to fund that and do that. If we wanted to make a pedestrian bridge across the creek, that'd be something we'd have to take into consideration if we wanted to give access to park from that side.
Great idea.
This is a donation to the city, correct?
Yes, and we've got to, we've got to agree to accept the donation.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll say it.
Have a motion, a second, to accept this property that's been donated by Mr. Brian Pettit. And we have the quick plane D. Attorney Fry has that, so we can get that recorded. Any questions about, about that? I know, Mark, you've looked at the property?
Yes. It's, it's a great place, it's 15 good acres down there. As you said, it's in the floodplain, but there are a lot of use for open space in the future. And around a couple of weeks ago, he has a big desire to have that pedestrian bridge in that neighborhood, with the neighborhood development. That's on down the road. Our master plan does show the walking trail, the master walking trail going down in that area, so.
This would expand that quite a bit, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
If you had access to it.
Plus, I think winter road, the development's going to have sidewalk on it. So it allows access all the way up the river road now for folks to get to the park.
And, you know, some of the prettiest part of that park is down where the frisbee golf is, which is not seen by a lot of folks unless you just walk down to it, but.
We had a lot of requests to add more holes to that, so we've made it a 27 hole course now.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to accept this donation. Is there any other questions about that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No? Motion carries. Thank you. That's all the resolutions and matters of business. I do have an appointment to make. First off, I want to thank Ms. Teresa Webb for serving as the mayor's proxy on the planning commission. She has recently resigned from that. It is the mayor's seat on the planning commission. I can either take that seat or I can just run a proxy to take my place on there. And I've appointed Mr. Kim Brewster to take that position on planning commission. So just to let city council know, he'll be filling my seat on the planning commission. Department reports. We'll start with you, Mark.
I'll have anything to report tonight. I'd like to.
You've got two departments and nothing to report.
We've got more than two of them.
Yeah, all right, and Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, just wanted to report on our fall paving. We have a pre-construction meeting, it's coming Wednesday. We've already had some preliminary discussions regarding planning for milling. And we still anticipate completion by Friday.
Okay, and remember the roads could approve, Corporate Park Drive, Sticky Road, and River Road.
That's correct.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Hogan on those? Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chief Webb?
I don't really have anything to report, just try to inform everybody and kind of clarify a little bit about all the traffic today. We started out this morning, the Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, working a tragic accident out on Telco Parkway. One person, they was dead on the scene, and they flew two more by livestock. They shut down Telco Parkway. As we know, in our area, there's three ways to get across Tennessee River. One of them is go across that bridge up there at 321 where Telco Parkway is at. And the other two are downtown Loudoun and out here on the interstate. Well, T-Dawgs, we've seen so many times throughout the summer, and they're having a wisdom, never tells anybody what they're doing, and decided they were going to do some work on I-75 northbound at 76 mile mark or so. That bridge got backed up. And then, so anyway, we, we just, we had a mess and, and, and everybody expects the police department to do something about it. We do the best we can with whatever black and white we've got at all intersections and work the traffic. But, I mean, it's just kind of like, you know, there's only one place to get across the river today, and that was downtown Loudoun.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just want to kind of explain what happened today with that.
Well, we added to that with planned maintenance on Sticky Road, you know? So it just, I mean, couldn't have been any worse of a predicament. You guys did a good job with what they had to work with, that's for sure.
Well, they weren't very effective, but they worked very hard at it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Brubaker, Chief Brubaker?
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, Director Brown? Yeah?
I'm sorry, I have nothing to report at the time.
Okay. Director Curtis? Anything to report? Manager Ross, you have anything else to bring up?
Yes, sir.
See, we have Mr. Brendan DeBoer. Mr. DeBoer, you have anything to, like to address council with?
No, anytime, I'd like to make a presentation on what our task force does. They're willing to come up and present.
You know, he's over at our task force, so if you'd like to request him to be on our agenda sometime, he'd be glad to update our council.
I mean, a couple reminders about two upcoming events. One tomorrow, during the lunch hour, an open house by Dover Signature Properties. Under the bridge downtown, the bridge doesn't have an address, but probably the best way to give directions is to Carmichael Inn, which is 600 Hackberry Street, just across the street from Carmichael Inn. And October 2nd, Mayor, is, is a day you had, you were eyeing for a fall cleanup day.
Right, that's, that's another City of Loudoun, looking good Loudoun litter pickup day. So we'll be here. If you want to help pick up trash along the road, we'll supply you with all of the proper pickup gear. Your vest and thing to pick up with, so it'd just be a good opportunity. We weren't trying to do one in the spring and in the fall, so this, it's on October 2nd. Did we set a time for that? Is it?
Well, if we, if we just carry it in the spring, it'd be from nine to 12. And that's, and we'll just, we'll just borrow the gloves and the bags and have us some routes and even some, some park locations that the middle school and the both of the high school have, have requested cleanup in some of their areas. It gets messy after, after Friday night lights. And that's also a safe area to pick up inside of the rideaway, so we thought we might correct some people that way.
It's a great opportunity if a student needs community hours for their scholarship, for the Tennessee promise to do, way to get community hours. So you could come and show up and help us pick up litter, take care of our community. Pass that on to folks you may know. Just meet here at City Hall at nine o'clock this Saturday, and we'll have the routes planned out for you and spend a little time cleaning up our community, so it'd be much appreciated. Thank you, Manager Ross. Also, the last thing I wanted to bring up was, Manager Ross sent out kind of a straw poll about the city council workshop on October 11th. We want to just keep that. I know he'll be, he'll be out of town for fall break, but I don't see any reason we need to change it. Do, anybody else? Okay, so what is it, November 11th? Councilmember reports. Tanny, you have anything?
I do, so we had our Loudoun County Solid Waste Disposal Commission meeting on Tuesday after the last council meeting. It was a very productive three-hour meeting. Our main topic of discussion was a vote to authorize the contract negotiations to restart with Republic. That vote did pass six to one. Ms. Patton, there was only no vote on that. This, this process is, is lengthy and, but Republic is very anxious and willing to work with us, and they are ready to move forward. So this is just a time for us to negotiate, try to make the current contract a little bit better for the county and the stakeholders as far as our return on what's being brought in over there trash-wise. So this, this is not a go on anything, but it's a contract extension. It does extend it out, and they're going to work on those terms. There's also some land that needs to be discussed and worked on. And so unless we can meet our, our terms, that may not go through. But if it does, we'll be back here to talk more about it as we get closer to those. To my knowledge, no ones even have met yet, so we're just now starting. Another change that took place that probably got a little discussion with our facilities and maintenance, I'm sure, was there's a sign that's now up out there, they are increasing mattress and tire fees. Republic is doing this to match their other facilities. We are the lowest anywhere in the southeast region. So they are increasing those fees. Our stakeholder rate, which means our City of Loudoun trucks that go through will not increase. You will not see an increase in that. They'll still receive that stakeholder rate as, as they always have for mattresses that they're picking up. But the mattress rate's $20 a mattress, or $500 a look. So the problem being, we're getting mattresses from all over coming here because it's cheaper. And then the mattresses are causing a big issue with equipment repairs. They, they just keep coming back up to the surface, it'll bury down. So we decided to increase that to $20, which is still a good enough fee to discourage that. Again, our local population, if you're not just taking your mattress over there, the city's beginning to know that fee does not pertain to our stakeholders. Tires are going up. If you take a passenger tire, it's a dollar and a quarter. I mean, that's nothing. A semi is $5. Anything larger than a semi is going to be 200, because those fill up the trailer. We have to have someone come get that trailer from us. We can't dispose of tires in our landfill. So when they come bring in the big tractor tires or the Vico, the, the links, it fills that up and then our locals can't put tires in there. So we have to stop taking those. So that's just an increase in that. If they have to help someone remove a tire, it's a $25 fee. help someone remove a tire, it's a twenty-five dollar fee. They're short staffed, just like everyone else, and that's taken away from their time that they could be, you know, doing other things. Those were the changes that happened in that meeting.
So they're probably just aligning their fees here with the other?
They are, and, and, and we are still a lower rate than the majority around. But this gets us up to where we're not just the, the dump site because we're...
Cheaper. Okay, thank you, and thank you for your service on that committee. It's not, it's not fun.
It's interesting.
Right. Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Dixon?
I've got a couple here. The Loudoun Planning Commission, we had a Tennessee National Subdivision brought the final plat to, to us, about seven lots, approximately five point nine nine acres. That was approved by the commission. That's the only thing we had. And then the Loudoun City Board of Zoning Appeals, Nathan Scott came and won a various request to build a home on one oh one Julian Street, which is a single-family home, and that was approved also.
Okay.
That's all we have on the, in the platting.
Okay, in the reports?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember James, you have anything to report on?
Nothing to report on, I just got a question about something I brought up last meeting. Michael, did you have a chance to go up on Stewart Street and look at that situation up there about the platting?
Have looked at it. It's something that we've addressed, addressed before. I think it's something that we need to look at regionally. There's a, there's a large drainage area contributing to that location. So I, I think that overall, we need to look at a drainage improvement that we need to coordinate with this property owners to, to convey water across the property.
Yeah.
So we may...
Do you think there's some kind, some way we can help him?
I think that we're draining road right away on, onto that location. And we need to, we need to remedy that.
Well, if you need to, I'll tell you, you may with him. I mean, if you don't mind meeting with him, okay? Seeing options, okay?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
That all you got? Councilmember James? Mr. Webster, you have anything to report on?
No, I don't have anything to report on, but I do want to say thank you to everyone who come out today. I want to thank Stanley for the indication, Mayor and Mr. Ross for everything you guys have done in the last few weeks, getting me up to speed with everything. I got plenty of minutes to read my way back to January. And all the forms, I mean, they, they were real good in getting everything done. I appreciate that. I want to thank the councilman and the mayor for making this smooth.
Well, thank you for volunteering.
I appreciate it.
Okay, I do have some anniversaries. I think you probably got some birthdays, I guess.
I got some birthdays.
We've got some anniversaries. You know, we recognize the ones that's, that's been over twenty years, but there's a lot of people that we don't want to leave out because they, they've worked too, and they're, they're celebrating an anniversary. Some of those are Scott Gagley with the Loudoun Fire Department, two years. Andy Lawson, two years with Public Works Department. Brooks Saret, three years with Parks and Rec. Luke Martin, four years with the Loudoun Fire Department. Jason Bibbins, fifteen years, Public Works. Ramy Law, eighteen years, Parks and Rec. Now, it's hard to believe, Ramy, he had to start right out of high school, you know, but. Bill Evans, as we mentioned, twenty-three years, Loudoun Police Department. Bobby Langford, twenty-three years at the Loudoun Police Department, twenty-four years. And then utilities, Melissa Husken, County Department, three years. Elizabeth Bradshaw, seven years with Customer Service. Adam Watson, fourteen years in our Electric Department. Jason Ward, fifteen years, Water Department. Jeff Franks, fifteen years, Water Department. Wayne Kettner, fifteen years, wastewater treatment plant. And then what was Chairman, Campbell recognized David Fickie for twenty-six years in our Gas Department. Greg Hensley, thirty-five years in Customer Service. And then the granddaddy was John Davis, forty years, Gas, Water, and Sewer. So I think he's the first one we gave a clock to, isn't he, Chairman Campbell? First one to receive crystal clock. So, you know, we want to make sure we recognize all of those from one year of service to, to forty years. So we depend on these, these folks, and they do a great job. I'm sure that Director Curtis and Chief Webb and Chief Brubaker can say we've done, Director Harold can say we appreciate those folks and what a job that they do. So I think you had some birthdays. Vice Mayor Dixon, you have some?
I do. All this. The Police Department, Benny Hauser, September the third. Kristen, I can't say her last name.
Go straight, guys.
There you go, thank you. September twenty-seventh, Fire Department, Stephen Akuff, September twenty-sixth. Jesse Yalgood, September eleventh. Scott Gagley, September thirtieth. Aaron Hanley, September nineteenth. Virgil Huffman, September twenty-second. Chris Lawson, September twenty-eighth. Jacob Ratliff, September seventeenth. Luther Walton, Jr., September fourteenth. Public Works, Larry Jenkins, September twenty-third. Recreation Department, Jeff Trout, September sixteenth. Electric Department, Joe Don Morefield, September the eighth. Water Department, Jeff Franks, September fourteenth. Gas Department, David Fickie, September the fourth. Barry McNabb, September the eighteenth. Water Plant was Matthew Henderson, September twenty-third. Customer Service was Elizabeth Bradshaw, September seventh. Kristy Ingram, September the third.
That's all. Okay, thank you. It's a, it's a blessing we're all getting over. We're celebrating another birthday, so we, we thank you for that. Any other closing comments that you can have before we adjourn?
I do.
Okay, but I have no objection. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.